Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call this meeting to order.
Seven thirteen P.M.
Seven thirteen P.M. If you can, would you please stand and recite the pledge and leashes to the flag with us? Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey. Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Ford.
Here. Next, Pastor Dixon, can you lead us in a word of prayer?
Let us pray. Lord, keep us as only you can. As your public servants, help us to execute judgment with wisdom. Continue to provide peace and care for each and everyone here present. Thank you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, next, we have general proceedings.
General proceedings, approval of the city council meeting, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions, comments, corrections? Here and now, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have communication report by the mayor. The first item, item number A, approval of agreement with the I A F F for a new firefighters and paramedics agreement. As you know, we're in the process of hiring firefighters. And the reason why we're short is because after we train the men and women for the job, they stay here for a short period of time. And then they move on to other positions. And so what we are saying is that if we're going to put time and effort into their training, they should at least be here for a certain amount of time. If they choose to take another job, that they should pay us back for the training and the uniforms that we have given them. So that's the motion. We've worked this out with the union. I say we, the attorney, Murphy, and the department head, Michelle, all worked with the union. Got the agreement from the union that these new hires or any new hires coming onboard have to spend a certain amount of time with the City of Country Club Hills Fire Department. And if they choose to leave, they have to pay us for the training and all those other things that we've done. So that is in your package tonight. If you need further explanation, I have John Murphy on the phone as well. Any questions?
May I be recognized? I just have one quick question, Mayor. Is the four months, is that the average time? Or is that the standard time that paramedics are given to get certified?
Yes, they're given, they have to be certified within a four-month period.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
If not, then we have to let them go. So I need a motion.
I had another, I had a question.
Yes.
Did we create like a wage garnishment that they would, that they would sign upon being hired?
Yes.
That would allow us to garnish the wages of the other employer if they choose to leave?
The other employer?
Yeah, I mean garnish their wages from the other employer.
I'm not sure.
I can answer that, Mayor, if you'd like.
John, go right ahead, John.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I had a, I had an auto accident Sunday, so still waiting on the car. The, it doesn't create a wage garnishment, but what, in part because the agreement provides that if somebody leaves us, say in a year, and they take another fire job within the next year, then they owe us the five thousand. So we would have to, we would have to pursue that person if we have to buy a lawsuit. But if that were to happen, I'm, I'm very confident that the incoming fire department or fire protection district would cooperate with the city on that. So in other words, the city, the individual could be gone from the city for a while without, with us not having any wages to hold back at the time he or she takes the new job.
The question is, is there a way that we can garnish your, their, their new employer? If they don't pay us before they leave?
Can we have them sign a wage garnishment, a wage levy?
Can we have them sign a wage garnishment before?
So as a part of their new, their new hire paperwork, you know, and onboarding, they would, there would be a wage levy in there that they would sign?
Well, they, they'll have to sign the agreement when they're hired.
But signing the agreement.
To take them to court.
So, so we can't get them to sign, they gotta sign the agreement, but there, there's no wage levy that would make it easier for us to just levy their wages because they agreed to it? We'd have to pursue them by lawsuit in order to collect this five thousand dollars?
I think that would be too challenging because the employee could say, well, I'm, the fire service is no good for me, I'm ju, I'm just leaving. So we would have to pay that employee what's due. Then if we find out three months later that that person's taking a job with another fire department, then we go after them. But there wouldn't be any, wouldn't be any holdback. And, and the public sector, wage garnishments are frowned upon.
Any other questions for John?
This was, I, I, we emphasized what the mayor said, this was in cooperation with the union, so I think the, the members of the department are just as interested in keeping, in keeping these new hires and discouraging them or from leaving us and encouraging them to stay with us. It's, you know, we're, we're in the, you know, we're in a huge, huge hiring challenge for new firefighter, paramedics.
One last question. Are there any other fire departments that you're aware of that are doing similar agreements?
I'm, I'm not aware, I, this is the, this kind of was a homegrown idea. What I am aware of is that other fire departments are offering incentives to individuals to switch from one department to another. And, you know, this is our way to kind of fight back on this thing. I don't know if Chief Hollinger's there, if she needs to add anything.
She's come to the mic. Chief, did you hear the question? Okay, do you know any other fire departments that's using the same method? Any other cities?
I mean, I like the idea, I just want to kind of find out how to actually enforce it.
So there are actually other cities, but they're more farther like north and west that do something similar. With this group, though, I'm actually happy to say that a lot of the people that did pass the, the test are actually within Division twenty-four, so we have some from, for example, you know, Glenwood, Flossmore. So they're actually very familiar with our organization, they're familiar with our training program, they're familiar with our roles, regulations, rules, responsibilities. So truly, I think that the ones that have passed the process are very interested in coming and staying. But I think that as far as the five thousand dollars, that's pretty much the money that we put into the uniforms, the turnout gear. So like I said, there are other departments that do something similar. You know, yeah, we're going to compete against bigger departments, but it's what we have to offer more as, you know, Country Club Hills Fire Department that's appealing to people. That answers your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to entertain someone, offer a motion, please.
Motion for agreement with the I A F F for the new firefighters, paramedics.
Second.
It's been probably motion second. Are there any other questions? Any other questions? Here are no other questions, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item, item B, is approval of the Country Club Hills redevelopment agreement with J and T Group, with the J and T Group. They were here, the admin, to provide you with information. And I believe that they answered most of your questions or all of your questions. This is a one-time house that we have given to them to see how they would rehab it and what the quality would be put into this home before we would even entertain any other ones. But this would be one that we would like, monitor them and make sure that they are living up to the expectations of the city and also the promises that they're making to the council.
May I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just, I had a couple of concerns, Mayor. Well, first, and obviously, I, I, was, was the Housing Commission involved? Or what happened with our Housing Commission? I know we have done a similar program with them in the past.
Right, right. The Housing Commission, since they are not functioning at this point in time, basically, it was the staff and myself and Public Works.
Okay. The second thing, you know, and I did read the agreement thoroughly, Mayor, and I just don't think it, it is beneficial to the city from a, I mean, I understand, if we're going to do a program like this, I think we need to obviously spread a bitter, bigger net in terms of selecting somebody to do this. And I think that we could benefit the city much better than a twenty-five-hundred-dollar admin fee. I mean, that just, I mean, there's, it just, there's a lot of professional developers in our town that I'm sure would like the same opportunities to at least present a proposal. So I'm not against doing something like this, I'd just like to do it for making it more open to developers and our residents in our, in our, in our city. And hopefully to make it a little better, because I'm sure you'll find that there'll be some people that'll put some much more attractive proposals together from an economic standpoint, to impact the city. There's a lot of them, Mayor, and I, I've actually talked to some just before I even made my opinions. So that, that's, you know, that's my stance on that.
Okay, so just a little.
Can I be recognized, Mayor? Just to add to what Alderman Davis was saying, there are a lot of programs out there, and there's a program that just passed by last week, Friday, in the South, South Suburban Land Economic and Development Meeting called the Reaction, the Reactivating Act. And they just had a meeting, Debbie Myers Martin, State Rep DeLuca, and all those guys, they met last week, and this, but, and this program passed, and it's very good, too. And so I think that before, like Alderman Davis said, before moving on something like that, we need to give other, other people opportunity. But this is a great program that we should entertain, so I will bring forth the information at our next admin meeting about it.
I'm familiar with that bill, and that bill passed about three months ago by Senator, Representative from Chicago Heights, but it doesn't address individual houses like vacancies like we have here. This is a different scenario than you're talking about. We, we, we're familiar with that bill because we were in Springfield when they passed it.
Well, last week, Friday, there was a meeting about it.
I understand that.
And it states that it has the same thing that the gentleman was talking about. And I will bring the information, and we can go over that.
Okay, so what's going to happen with that program is different from this one, because this gentleman went to, not the land bank, but he went to the county and made, and retained the deeds for this property, so that he'll be able to rehab it on our behalf. Now, this is a different project from the one that we have with Cook County Land Bank. And Alderman Davis, I understand your comments on that, because we do have other opportunities. We have fourteen, thirteen houses, vacant houses that, in Country Club Hills, that the city will be owning in a very short period of time. So this is like a, a simple program that we, the guy came to the meeting last Monday, and he explained it, and there was no pushback at that time. And he explained it very well, that he inquired the deeds to Cook County on behalf of the city. And so the city is allowing him this, to rehab this house. This house has been there for at least fifteen, twenty years vacant.
May I be recognized?
And so we want to just see what he can do. And he'll be just one of the people that we can have in the pipeline that will be able to apply for the other thirteen that we have.
May I be recognized? I was present, and they did not present us with a before, after picture, legal documents, license, bonds, and state licenses. I would like to see all that brought to the council before we make a decision.
Well, that's fine, we should have requested that when they were here. You have any of that information? So the gentleman is here, he can get you all that information, you know.
I have a, can, may I be recognized?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. One is, and I, because I was not at the meeting on Monday, I was absent, so the clarification needed with your, the statement on the deed to the property on behalf of the city, so I'm not quite certain, if he has the deed to the property, then why, why would we need to quick claim deed it?
Because the deed is in the name of the city, not in his name. The property belongs to the city, not to the individual.
Oh, okay, because I, I thought I heard you say he went and got the deeds to the property or has the.
He obtained it on our behalf, but they couldn't issue it to him, they had to issue it to, issued it to us, the city. We currently own the house, and we own thirteen other ones as well, a will house. We'll own them in a short period of time.
Okay. The other question was in regards to there not being any information on equity in here. It, I only see an administrative fee at closing of twenty-five-hundred dollars. So, and maybe, maybe you can explain, but, so we quick claim deed the property to this developer, and he rehabs it, pays for the transfer stamp, puts up a surety bond, does the permits, but at sale of the property, we only get twenty-five-hundred dollars? Because if this property, if you get, you know, you, we did the property, you rehab it, and then it goes on the market and sells for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we get nothing from that? We only get twenty-five-hundred dollars at closing?
But they control the financing as well, too.
They control the financing, we don't put them on the market.
Right.
Excuse me, sir, can you please state your name for the records, please? Can you spell the last name for me?
D.L.O.C.K.S.O.L.
Thank you, sir.
Can you speak into the mic, too? I think he's coming. Oh, turn the mic on, okay.
So, yes, we pre-sell the homes, but we're also, we have to pay our attorney fees, or, you're not including our attorney fees and everything to get those deeds to deed them, so the city can get the deeds and then deed them back to us. So there is some upfront cost that we use out of our own private money to get those guys.
Okay, so I guess, again, I'm trying to understand the equity and what the city would get out of the equity. I mean, houses are up right now, so you're saying the individuals that would be on the line for purchasing it determine what they want to pay for it once it's finished, and they, they, they take part in picking what they want in the house, and the countertops, and flooring, and everything like that? I understand that. But at the end of the day, when it sells, what additional monies does the city get outside of twenty-five-hundred dollars?
That's what we agree to, because we do the same thing in other cities, with, we have agreements with in Kuyumet City, Burnham, and Hazelcrest also.
So the city took it upon themselves?
The city will then, no, the city will then get the taxes, it's going to go back on the tax roll. And it's now, no longer a vacant home, so it's going to improve the neighborhood. And then if there's more, it depends on the sale, how much they sell the house for, how much profit they make, and then we can negotiate something after that.
Well, no, you can't negotiate after they make the profit.
So this was a trial one, trial run, and then basically, the mayor said, we'll come back to the table after we finish one, and we'll discuss after that. So this was a trial period for this redevelopment agreement. There's only one, on the exhibit, there's only one property.
One house.
There's one house.
Okay. I, I think there just needs to be more discussion on that. I, I, it doesn't sit right with me that a person be able to pretty much just pay, you know, some permit fees and twenty-five-hundred dollars at closing and be able to walk away with, you know, quite a bit of equity, money at closing. I know there, you're explaining there is some upfront cost, you're paying the money upfront to rehab, and then upon closing, you know, whatever it sells for, that, but, you know, maybe there's a, a percentage or something that needs to be discussed or something like that, because that's not a lot of money.
But they control in the finance, too, as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, we offer our buyers a three percent closing clause. We're all here for the buyer and for the properties to get back on the tax roll. I mean, the property's been sitting there for fifteen years, so the best thing to do is to put a eligible home buyer in the property, and we vet all the home buyers, we have it, we can't rent these homes at all. So our goal is to put a home buyer in that property, get it back on the tax roll, and that buyer stays there for the next fifteen, thirty years. I think that's a solution to a property sitting vacant for fifteen years next to people that don't want a vacant property.
Oh, I, I mean, I understand it, and I get, you know, your, the, the philosophy behind it, I'm just still saying, you know, there's still dollars on the table that, as a city that gets distressed in certain times of the year, that we don't need to be able to just walk away from that. I mean, the, there needs to be some sort of built-in scale that, you know, if you make more money, then we get more money. If you don't make that much, then we don't make that much.
That all depends on the market, of course. That all depends on the market, of course. Interest rates are up almost to seven percent, too. So that market that you're talking about, it was at a high, is actually kind of falling, so.
Yeah.
That just depends on the market, that's kind of hard to do, because you don't know if a property's going to sell for a hundred fifty thousand, or if nobody buys it, they sells for a hundred thousand. So that scale is kind of hard to.
Well, that, that would be the scale, that would be the percentage. So if you make more money, then we make more money. If you don't make more money, then we don't make more money. It's not a flat rate, so we're not saying we're going to charge you ten thousand dollars, no matter if it sells for a hundred or two hundred. We're saying if you, if you sell it for one fifty, we make ten percent. If you sell it for a hundred, we still only make ten percent.
So are you talking about the profit? Because on some of the properties, like we just did in Burnham, we made no money, because the property was so messed up. So the property was so down, the foundation was wrong, the whole siding was over, we still rehabbed it, we still, the buyer still purchased the property, and we lost money. So I don't know how we're going to do a scale dependent on that, because if we lose twenty thousand dollars, what do, what do we give you then?
Not, not, that's the, that's the scale.
Okay, so let's, enough discussion on that one, we can either vote it up or down. We don't know the condition of the house, it might take fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars to bring it up. And that's why this was a, a trial basis, because after fifteen years, we don't know what's in the house, we don't know if this.
Well, after, the, the thing about it is, if, 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 if all this had transpired and went down, then the council should have been involved with it at the beginning and not on the back end. So this is where we at it.
The council was involved with it, and they were here last week.
Well.
And so enough, I'm done with the discussion, we've had our chances, we can vote it up or down and keep it moving. So is there a, is there a motion or not a motion?
I'll bring the motion. A motion for approval for the Country Club Hills redevelopment agreement with J and T Group.
Is there a second? Okay, there's no second, so the vote fails. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda will be the city clerk's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that I recently attended the Illinois Municipal League Training, and some of the items they offered training on were finance, human resources, public works, public safety, and communications and economic development. So I will actually put together a slight report and share that with you all in the coming weeks. End of report.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the committee reports, we have the finance committee. Next committee, Finance and Risk Management, Alderman Lockett, the chairperson.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council's approval in the vouchers for the amount of four hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second. It's been probably motion second. Are there any questions? Here are no questions, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Motion carries. Second item.
Okay, next, Mayor, is item for ordinance amending the section one-five-zero-five of the Country Club Hills city code relating to compensation of the city clerk. This item did not make it out of committee, so therefore, we'll be tabling that item for tonight.
Okay. Anything else?
Just, just if I can mention, the committee determined or felt that this is not something that's good for the public eye, for elected official to be asking for a increase in their pay. This is something they felt that is more of something of the public sector, when someone goes to school and they get a degree in something, then they can come back to their employer and say, well, I have a degree, and I should get paid more money based on this, not as an elected official, because you got some training or something like that, that you should get more money.
Okay. Anything else on your report?
End of the report.
All right, thank you. Lowering ordinance government operation, Alderwoman Evans, Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. My next meeting is Thursday, this Thursday, September twenty-ninth at five-thirty P.M. And there's several things on the agenda to be discussed. And I did just want to make note, this probably falls more under public works, but I did email Public Works and Building on August third. I also emailed them again, following up on that email, about two weeks later. I then emailed them again, and I think I copied you, Mayor, and the city manager the week before last. I have yet to hear anything back from the department on the items that I sent in for my ward. Can I get a status update on that?
I forward that email on to the Public Works Director, and he's working on a response to you. And we will get your response, I will follow up with him and get your response, hopefully tomorrow.
Because specifically, like I said, August third, I emailed the original email.
Yes.
August thirtieth, I followed up.
Yep.
And then Aug, September fifteenth, that's when I included you on there, and I have not heard back anything on all ten items.
Okay. We'll get that for you.
That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. We got Public Works and Utilities, Alderman Davis, the chair.
Thanks, Mayor. And I do have an update, as following up from the last report. They did start the CDBG and invest in Cook work. I know Alderman Evans had a, Alderman Edwards, Edwards, I'm sorry, had an issue, so I did talk to, to get an update, but the process should be completed in ten to twelve business days, weather permitting. And I realized some of the residents were inconvenienced, so they're just asking for them to be patient. And some of the issues that you may, you know, they can actually park on the street if they have to, but it will be no change in the trash or the recycling schedule unless the city notifies them. So if they got a concern about their garbage pickup or trash, just, you know, put it out like they normally do. I know it might be hard, some of the, the driveways, but the goal is to have both projects completed by the end of October, if not soon. Also want to just remind the city that the branch pickup is as follows. Saturday, October fifteenth, it'll be south of one hundred and eighty-third Street. Saturday, October twenty-second, it'll be north of one hundred and eighty-third Street. And street sweeping will be October, the week of October seventeenth, will be south of one hundred and eighty-third, and the week of October twenty-fourth will be north of one hundred and eighty-third. And if you need the streets, I can identify those, too, on the CDBG, the ones that were. And if you need the streets, uh, I can identify those two on the C D B G, the ones they're working on, but you, you actually can see some of the work started, so. That's the end of my report.
Okay, any questions?
Yes. Um, Davis, I'm looking at the sheet, so do we have, I know we have, um, a hundred and eighty-third, which is Invest and Cook, so you referred to that one, am I correct?
Yep, that's correct.
What's the next one? Do I just want to circle?
Uh, the, uh, the five, C D B G.
C D B G.
And that's, just to refresh your memory, School Street, Princeton Lane to Yale Lane, Hundred and Eightieth Street, Costner Avenue to Ravenslope Terrace, Lakeview Drive to Ravenslope Terrace to Pulaski Road, Costner Avenue, Hundred and Eighty-Second Place to Hundred and Eightieth Street, Chestnut Drive, Hundred and Ninety-Fourth Street to the Hundred and Ninety-Fourth Court. Those are the five C D B G.
Okay, so we still, still, um, waiting on the Deco, uh?
Yes.
Okay, we still waiting on that one?
Yes. Okay.
Yes.
Anything else, Alderman Davis?
No, it's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this point, uh, we want, we have Economic Development Plan and Zoning. Alderman Spivey, chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to set an appointment, um, meeting for Thursday to twenty-ninth, six-thirty. What's your time?
What is it, what is it again?
Thursday to twenty-ninth, six-thirty.
Thursday, six-thirty, okay.
You get on that?
Thursday.
Okay.
Five-thirty, mine's at five-thirty.
Six o'clock can be fine, six-thirty, six.
No, six-thirty, because I got a lot on my.
Okay, six-thirty.
Just come back.
Can you mention those terms to the clerk, 'cause she didn't get it?
Thursday to twenty-ninth, six-thirty.
So I'll get the agenda tomorrow. You will send the agenda?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll send it over.
Yeah, has to be tomorrow if you're gonna have a meeting on Thursday.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, next, uh, we have?
Did you finish?
In the middle part.
Okay. Next, we have, um, Education and Parks and Recs.
Thank you, Mayor. My next meeting will be the twenty-ninth at five o'clock. You're all welcome to come. Um, I'd like to thank the clerk and the fire chief. We ordered some books off the website for the schools. Also like to say that before we do any major street work, please let's notify the residents some kind of way, so they'll know. And thank you for coming out, Mayor, and, uh, other people came out who helped get the two ladies where they could park across the street, because the, whoever's doing the project kind of like tore up their driveway. Um, end of my report.
All right, thank you. At this time, I need a motion to open floor to the public.
Motion open floor to the public.
Second.
It's been probably motion the second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, public, if you would like to address the council, please come forward and limit your time, please, to about three minutes or less. Anyone? Turn up to the microphone, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Maurice Taylor. I'm a resident of Hundred and Eighty-Fifth Place. Uh, the reason I'm here tonight is for a water bill. Uh, recently, I've received a water bill, well, I got a notice on my door around August tenth. And as a notice, uh, they told me to get them a call. I called the water department. They said I used between August first to August tenth nineteen thousand gallons of water. Hours. I'm looking over my bill, and from June, got a bill for fifty-five dollars and ten cent. July, thirty dollars. July thirty-first, thirty dollars. July thirty-first, again, fifty-five dollars. Haven't received a bill for August, but it's in our old two hundred and seventeen dollars.
How much?
Two hundred and seventeen dollars. For one month. I don't have a swimming pool.
So your, your water bill's only been like thirty dollars a month?
Thirty dollars or fifty-five dollars.
Well, let's trade bills. I'll take yours and you take mine. Well, uh, uh, if I could say.
I don't have no kids there. I don't have no pool. I don't have no ground sprinkler system. I went over to the department. Um, the gentleman that came out to my house had a toilet in my basement that was shut off. I don't have a toilet in my basement.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, if I can, um, I, I think, um, and I don't think no one's back there now, but that's something that could be, Jerry probably can, um, help with that, but i- if it's thirty dollars, then there's some mistake in the billing, because the minimum billing for anyone in Country Club Hills is fifty-five dollars.
It's been fifty-five dollars, but a meter doesn't read fifty-five dollars precisely every month.
No, I understand, but I'm saying if you got a bill for thirty dollars, then there's.
I got a bill twice for the month of July.
Okay.
Fifty-five and thirty dollars. And then it jumped from thirty dollars to two hundred and seventeen dollars. And now it's saying for September, I owe thirty dollars again.
Okay, we can, we can, we can fix that for you. Uh, if you hold on for a second, I have the Jerry from, uh, my project manager take a look at that for you. He's in the room behind you. Uh, okay.
It's a lot of water.
I understand, and we'll, we'll get that resolved, okay? Just, if you hold on a minute, then we'll, yeah, thank you. We'll have someone to speak to you about that and take all your information, and we'll do the research for you. Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Cliff Graham, um, forty-nine twenty Lake Court. Um, got a few things, but I want to get a couple out the way real fast. Um, do you all plan on discreting, or where are we gonna pick up the petitions for the next election? Um, to City Hall? There's no petitions for any other offices that's coming open in the coming election. I'm trying to find out when is the process gonna begin where I can, uh, other people can get petitions for the next election. Um, another thing, um, Black Caucus is having a meeting tomorrow in Hazelcrest. Um, I don't know where, we don't know, but they're inviting residents and elected officials to come out to Hazelcrest. Um, the address is at City Hall, and I would hope that everybody would try to attend to address some of the issues, especially our property taxes and other things, but can tell everybody about the meeting tomorrow. They're gonna be in our community, um, asking us on what we think our, our community is doing for us, so. I hope the leaders also attend that meeting.
We have the invitation, but it didn't state that they wanted residents to attend. It's for mayors.
It, it did not say not to either.
I'm just telling you that the invitation came to us as mayors.
Right.
Uh, to attend the Black Caucus, Illinois Black Caucus of Mayors.
Well, Representative Harper sent it to me, and it, it, and I read what it said, but it also said R S V P. Since you mentioned that about contact R S V P, I, I tried to R S V P, but the phone was disconnected.
That's because you're not, you're not elected official.
Well, if, if a number called, it still should answer the phone. And it doesn't say elected officials on it. It says right here, DeSonia Robinson, it says.
Mr. Graham, that's, that's beyond the city.
Well, let me finish mine, then you can elaborate after I do my three minutes. Okay? That'd be the best thing.
Okay.
Okay? So if you want to know, uh, you want to find out elected officials, you should've told them, then I wouldn't have to tell them on my time. Okay? Anyway, um, and with this twenty-five hundred dollars to give somebody some property that's been sitting there fifteen years, you say there's thirteen properties left, and you're willing to give him twenty-five hundred for this property, I'm willing to buy all fourteen of them for a hundred thousand dollars, if you're giving them away like that. I'll write a check this week. So if we're gonna play those little tit-tat, you're gonna get this man twenty-five hundred dollars when I'm paying fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars in property taxes, and you're gonna give him a vacant house? It should be open to the bidder like me who paying these taxes for the last twenty years over two hundred thousand dollars. No, that's un, it's unacceptable. There's not a housing committee on this, on this community that's one of the biggest and most expensive communities in the country, especially for black people. If we don't have a housing committee that's prepared to, to answer these type of questions, it's unacceptable. That, once again, why I want my petition. And with the union agreement, if the person garn, decided not to go, you don't garnish their check. It's gonna cost more money than our highest attorney, which is our highest attorney in the country probably, gonna go back to court and say, "Hey, no need to go on the court, 'cause it's gonna cost them more to take them to court."
Mr. Graham.
Than to get our money. I figured my time is up now, 'cause you took two minutes of it.
Mr. Graham.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Harry Evans. Uh, just have some questions about a Hundred and Eighty-third Street, uh, and the, uh, construction work that's going on there. Um, just like to find out some different things that could possibly be happening there, uh, because it's been considered one of the best, uh, streets here in the, the, uh, community, and now it appears to be a lot of work going on, on this street.
Okay. Uh, you can get that answer in a few minutes, once we close this out. We get an answer for you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Florence Taylor. I'm at a Hundred and Seventy-seventh Street in Country Club Hills. Built here in nineteen eighty-seven. There was a water cap in my driveway. Got the house moved. We go down in there, turn my water off. And I saw the guy out there, and I went out there, and I said, "What are you doing?" He said, "I'm turning your water off." Didn't pay, and I said, "Pardon me?" So he called and found out that he was at the wrong house. But in the meantime, the cap never did get back on right. So I came over here several times, my husband too. They finally came and moved that cap, because it shouldn't have been in the driveway. They moved it over to the grass there. But they tore up all this stuff, and it came down, and it just put a little bit of asphalt in instead of completing the whole thing. And now the curb here, which means you could better use your snow blower or shovel in the winter time. It's gonna be banging up against it. They got a curb.
Okay. Uh, we will, um.
We came back over here again and talked to someone, and then they said, "Okay, we'll take care of it." But it's like a constant thing. You call.
What's your address?
Direct you to the person, and then you don't ever get anyone. I mean, I wouldn't even known about this meeting today, 'cause when I called to fan out about it, they wanted to direct my call. They never direct me to anybody that answered me. So I called Mr. Lockett. I was lucky to get his phone number when I was at the last meeting with the firemen and the police officer. And he was the one that told me to meet with us today.
That's the right person to contact, is your Alderman, yes.
Yeah, well.
So what's your address, Mayor? Will we have someone to look at?
Forty-one oh-six, West Hundred and Seventy-seventh Street.
Forty-one oh-six, Hundred and Seventy-seventh Street.
His name is Taylor.
All right. We'll have someone to take a look at that for you tomorrow.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Close the floor to the public, please.
Motion close floor to the public.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably motion second. Uh, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, Alderman reports, starting with, uh, Alderman Edwards.
I'm gonna put a sign up in my name, so you can remember my name.
You're Edwards, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Anyway, um, I just want to let the residents know that, um, I drive through the neighborhood periodically checking streets and introducing myself, and that the city council are keeping in contact with each other. We're trying to make the city better. Um, so get out, talk to your neighbors, get people involved. I'm here. My meeting is five o'clock Thursday. Anything I can do for you, no matter what ward you live in, I'm willing to help you. End of my report.
All right, Alderman Spivey?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening to the residents of, of Country Club Hills. Just want to say, thank you guys for coming out to the meeting. Uh, there's a lot of street improvements, uh, pavement that was going on in the fourth ward. Uh, I wanted to, uh, send a special thanking out to Public Works for that. Uh, also, Mr. Graham spoke about a hundred, no, Mr. Evans just spoke about a Hundred and Eighty-third Street coming down. Um, I think he's right about that particular street being one of the best streets so far here in Country Club Hills. So there is some little things that's going on, uh, as far as like curves are on that street, but I think there's enough within the wards that really need to be taken care of. So, um, I do understand your concerns about that. End of my report.
Thank you. Alderwoman Evans?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, there was, uh, back to the list that I emailed. I just wanted to reference a couple of things that were sent in, so that folks are aware what information, um, is, was sent in.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause I know you said, uh, was that addressed, was, were some of them addressed, or streets? It wasn't, uh, about any streets, although I did send a separate email to try to get an update on the streets, and I, we've since talked about the streets, so I'm kind of okay on that for the time being. Um, but what was sent in were things such as, uh, overgrown trees and vacant houses, overgrown trees and grass on vacant houses, so I've got quite a bit of those were on the list, where residents had called in and said the house next door or house across the street is, you know, overgrown with weeds and trees, you know, when is that going to be taken care of? And I know we do have a program where we, you know, take care of that, and we put a lien against the house, so that if that house ever does sale, we can, we can recoup our funds. But, um, this is just to help the residents that live next to vacant houses or live across from vacant houses. These properties are being overgrown, um, and not being taken care of. The other was, uh, there was a couple of residents that inquired about the subdivisions that they live in. There were at one point signs in those subdivisions, for example, Hawthorne Heights and the Highlands, and these signs were taken down and maybe to be painted or reconstructed or something, but they've never been put back for some years. So these residents are inquiring about the signs for their subdivision. So that was one of the, um, concerns that I sent in as well. The other, uh, was a dead tree down in the Hundred and Seventy-sixth block of Hawthorne, and there are some seniors that live there, and they're unable to move that tree. Uh, the other, there were two, one, one in the Hundred and Seventy-eight block of Rosewood. There's a pothole. That pothole is still there, and that was, again, the original email was sent in August third. And another was the Hundred and Seventy-ninth block of Laverne. There's also a pothole there. Again, that was sent in August third. It's not the point that it hasn't been done, because there's a process, and, you know, maybe there's a ticket system in which stuff gets put in and, and gets addressed, um, with, you know, a, a level of emergency, you know, medium level of emergency, lower level. It's the fact that nobody has responded back to me, and I've sent three emails, and not one person says, "Okay, received," or "Working on this," you know, "These two will be taken care of next week. I'll have to get you an update on the rest." It's just that no one has responded back. So is that like, you know, what is the protocol? Um, that's my concern, because that's, this is not the first email that I've sent in where that's happened, where I've sent in emails or sent, and I think, I think folks are, uh, have a misunderstanding that the Aldermen actually work out of City Hall. We don't work out of City Hall. We don't have offices here, so we have to communicate through email and telephone a lot of times with staff, and that's our only means of communication, uh, unless you're coming up to City Hall every day. And most of us don't come to City Hall every day, because, um, the city is supposed to be just, you know, functioning, and that's what the staff is for. And we get information from our residents, or as we drive around, like Alderman Edwards, Edwards said, we see things, we write them down, we send them in, and we relying on staff to respond back to us and let us know what's going on. So I, I do feel that this is becoming a problem that I would like addressed. The other thing is, um, the I A F F agreement. Um, I do support that agreement. I think it's the start. I don't think it's necessarily the finish. Um, right now, the way it's set up, it seems to be, um, hopefully, folks that have a moral compass will kind of be detoured from leaving, because they feel like they may have to pay that five thousand dollars back. Those, of course, that don't have a moral compass will say, "Hey, to do, you know, let them sue me." That's exactly what we don't want to happen, is to have to spend legal fees to try to recoup five thousand dollars, because it'd cost more than five thousand dollars to recoup five thousand dollars. If anything, we can use the legal, um, uh, the, the legal staff that we have here to build a more robust contract or more robust wage levy, so that it's more ironclad. So if someone does leave, it makes it easier for us to garnish their wages or get that money back. That's what I would say use the legal, um, team for, not for suing these people to get five thousand dollars back. It's gonna cost more than five thousand dollars. But it is a start, so I do like it. The other thing was, uh, resident, um, Mr. Graham, you asked about petitions. I'm not quite sure what you're, what you're requesting when you say, "Where do we get petitions?" Though. But, but what are, what are you petition, I mean, petitions to do what?
There's no.
Yeah, you have to either get your own created, or you, you know, work with a, a person that would create a petition for you, or like, uh, Alderman Lockett said, contact the Board of Elections.
You can always also contact the, uh, the city clerk as well.
Or the city clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and that is pretty much the end of my report. Again, my meeting, my next meeting is Thursday, this Thursday, September twenty-ninth at five-thirty P M. End of my report.
Alderman Lockett?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to remind everyone, as we all know, the kids are back to school, so, of course, they don't walk the sidewalks, they walk in the street, so be careful when you're driving. Um, it's getting cool outside, so make sure you protect your homes from, um, rodents who look for somewhere warm to go to, so protect your home, spray, or get the little bitty holes that you think, um, that they might be able to enter repaired and that. And I, I don't know, Mayor, if you mentioned before, one of the former Aldermen, uh, Tom Komei.
Tom Komei.
Passed away.
Yes.
Um, he was Alderman here for, uh, quite some time in the past. Um, other than that, um, that's the end of my report. Stay safe, everyone. Covid is still alive. Uh, make sure you stay safe. Thank you.
Alderman Davis?
All right, thanks, Mayor. Um, the only, I can answer, um, Mr. Evans, that, um, the one hundred and eighty-third street, that's a grant, Invest and Cook, of eight hundred thousand dollars. Some of the streets that what we didn't actually pick, a lot of these streets identified by the branch, they had, they put like six hundred thousand dollars in the budget to identify certain, that one. Turn that down. It's not even a city street, it's a county street.
It's a county street.
Right, and they identified.
Yes, they're gonna resurface, a resurface of that street. I'm, I'm thinking it's gonna be concrete. Yes, is that right, Jerry? Of course he knows. He's got the project. Is it concrete or asphalt? Asphalt, one hundred and eighty-third. I'm sorry? I don't know. I can't answer that. That'd have to be something I'd look into. Yeah. But. Right, right. Well, just. Well, it's not, it's, it's not perfect, Mr. Evans, because, yeah, yeah, no, it's perfect. But let me tell you. When you finish, yeah. Yeah, okay. Um, that street has buckled, uh, two or three times during the summer around Baker Avenue. I don't know if you noticed it. But there's some holes there in Baker Avenue, there's some holes out here. And that's, uh, Invest and Cook. That is a county road. So the county then will have to decide on how they want to do it. Uh, that's not a decision that we can make as a city, because it's not our road. We can suggest, we can, we can suggest, we can, yeah, we can suggest. Uh, now, just for your information, uh, the street, the cost for doing that street was eight hundred thousand dollars when we got the bid a year ago, a year and a half ago. The cost to do that street today is like, um, ten thousand, ten hundred thousand dollars. And so we reached out to the county and tell, to tell them that they're gonna have to give us another two hundred thousand to go on top of the eight to do that, but it is a county, uh, county street. And it's Invest and Cook is the project. Where, where do we leave off at? Alderman Davis, will you finish?
Yep, that's it, Mayor. End of, end of my report.
Motion for a German.
Okay. Okay, it's been probably motion the second. Uh, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey? Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, you would like to speak to the mayor?
Getting adjourned at eight oh eight.
Come forward, please.